I'd like to call this committee at a whole meeting to order. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Recommendation the committee to hold adopts the October 9, 2018 agenda as presented. Please, Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to the minutes section. Recommendation committee to hold adopts the September 4, 2018 committee to hold minutes as presented. Move it please. Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carried. All right. We're moving on to our regional topics with our Director Russell. Good morning, Rowley. Welcome.
Thank you.
Are you out of breath?
I'm out of breath.
Better rip.
I don't have anything in particular other than some of the other items that are on the agenda to speak to.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Hammond.
Yes, could Director Russell elaborate on the Kettle River watershed?
Sorry.
There was a very, very low turnout at the presentation.
Yeah, I believe that was one of the reasons for coming.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sorry. I thought that was another item on the agenda, so my apologies. Absolutely. So I think you all are aware by now that we have a referendum question coming up on the October 20 election. And the referendum question is whether or not to support the creation of a watershed, of what we call the Boundary Integrated Watershed Service. And that would be across all three electoral areas and three municipalities in the Boundary area. And the question is whether or not to allow for a maximum tax requisition of up to $160,000 to support that service. That would be contingent on, it has a five-year window on that allocation. So after five years of the six elected representatives on the RD for the Boundary area, so the City Ground Forks, Greenwood, Midway areas, C, D, and E. If five out of those six agree at that point and decide that they want to vote to support it to continue, then it would continue. Otherwise, that funding would stop after five years. And the rationale for it is essentially focused at delivering the recommendations that are in the Kettle River watershed management plan. So the Kettle River watershed management plan has been a project of the Boundary Directors for the Regional District for the last probably eight years maybe. Came about initially based on the concerns about water use surrounding the Cascade Power Project and Big White's proposal at that point to have a dam and a reservoir at that point and concerns about the downstream impacts of that. So that turned into a technical assessment, turned into a longer-term study on the watershed and looking at how we can bring more direct kind of responsibility into our local decision-makers around watershed decisions and making sure we have the right information at our hands to do that. And so that then for the last four, so that was done four years ago. For the first three years, we had funding mainly from gas tax as well as some other sources. The City Ground Forks had contributed some funds as well directly as well as through gas tax to deliver the implementation of that, some of the recommendations in that plan. That three-year window expired at the end of 2016, sorry, at the end of 2017, 2018. So this year, we've used some gas tax funds to work on project-specific pieces that are in there, so drought-coordinated drought response plans. The City Ground Forks had allocated $15,000 specifically for communication outreach. All those funds are expiring at the end of this year. And so this referendum represents the question to the public in terms of whether or not they wish to continue on that path of trying to implement that watershed management plan and deliver a staffing position, it would be a full-time staffing position at the Regional District to help implement those recommendations in this plan. And so I can just, I think a good summary of that, you know, what they capture are things like, so the goals of that, the overarching goals for that plan are healthy aquatic ecosystems, sustaining native biodiversity and aquatic life, so that includes healthy flow regimes and water levels, excellent water quality, excellent quality habitat and wetlands repairing areas and associated uplands. Number two, safe and secure water supporting healthy communities, that's safe and secure drinking water, safe water-based recreation called a leisure and recreational activities, community enjoyment and expression of spiritual, cultural heritage and aesthetic values, stable shorelines and resilient floodplain use. Number three is, the third goal, is reliable and adequate flows of clean water to support a sustainable economy and food system. And those are captured by adequate water supply to support current and future uses and reliable, secure water supplies to support current and future uses within sustainable levels. So those goals capture basically all of the recommended action items within this plan. And so there are copies of this online as well as you can either pick them up at the RD office and I assume there's probably some here as well, if there's not, we can get some here. So that's the impartial kind of description of what that is. Answer questions.
Thanks, Rowley. So, passing them down. I'm sure everyone can hear me but maybe not TV. So does this watershed plan encompass the communities like Rock Creek and up that way? I know there's a lot of farming that goes on there and we drive through there a lot of times and just see the spring glitters, you know, going and they must be pulling water from the river. So I'm just wondering, does this plan encompass them and work into how they are farming, what their farming practices are with water use?
Yes, it captures everything from, and including Big White, all the way through the communities of those Boundary, all the way up to Christine Lake and everything in between. And so again, making sure we're kind of focused on what this referendum question is. So that, this referendum question will be on the ballots across the Boundary. So for all of the eligible voters across the Boundary, that's the group that is, will be deciding whether or not this referendum goes ahead. And so everybody has a vote and it's a simple majority of those voters across the entire region.
Just a follow-up question? Just, so what authority would the coordinator or whoever the person is who would have the position to oversee this, what authority would they actually have?
They would have no more authority than local government would have normally, right? So it is the local government, it's a position to assist decision-makers in local government, being us as elected officials, make those decisions around our table. So it would be resourcing to deliver the HR capacity basically to help us navigate some of these questions. So for example, it would be a resource that we might also use, you know, some of the recommendations in here pertinent to what is going on these days for us have to do with updating floodplain mapping and so on and so forth and looking at channel migration zones. And that's the sort of thing that this capacity would help, you know, if that was identified as a high priority for that person's work plan, they would do that. It doesn't mean that they would have any, they would have no different authority than we would have as local government. And so one of the pieces of confusion that has come up a number of times is a question of whether this has to do with water meters, we'll jump right into that topic. And water meters are the authority of whoever is providing water, right? So the City Ground Forks or Irrigation District and so on and so forth. So this service has nothing to do with metering water or licensing groundwater, which is provincial authority, right? And so there's no, there's no change in authority from what local government would normally have and there's no intent here to be involved with groundwater licensing other than, you know, there was a project to assist agricultural users, for example, in terms of navigating that provincial process because it was complicated, but it was assistance to those local residents. It wasn't, and it won't be anything to do with promoting groundwater licensing, for example, other than helping with that provincial process.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Councilor Hammond.
Yeah, so will this protect source-to-tap water? Like are you looking at protecting the water from contaminants seeking into our water sources through agricultural herbicides, pesticides, cattle in the creek and including any of the water that runs off into the Kettle River that could contain contaminants? And then maybe just elaborate on the small amount of money it's going to cost everybody now that it's shared throughout the entire region on average per household, so.
So the first question, the second question first because that's the simple one, that if the service was approved by the voters and if the budget process, which is, would be the City Ground Forks and the other, and other five representatives voting on that budget essentially, if that budget was all the way at the maximum level, which it almost never is, right? So if it was taxed to the maximum requisition possible, it would be just under $5 for a homeowner per thousand, per $100,000. So whatever your assessment is, roughly speaking, it would be $5 per $100,000 with that assessment. The other question about quality of water and regulation of, let's say, toxins or pesticides or something in the water system. So I have to be careful about what hat I'm wearing here as usual it seems. So for me, you know, as a elected representative, which is why I'm here, I'm a strong advocate for this, so I can speak to that piece acting as an advocate on behalf of this potential service. And I would say we don't have, I don't believe in local government, a good way to address those kinds of concerns unless we have the staff resource through a position like this to be able to deliver that. And so if there are avenues that we want to go down as a community to have better oversight or better decision-making capacity around environmental concerns in terms of contamination or pollutants, then we need to have the staff resource to be able to do that. And that's part of what this would deliver. The specifics of that example that you're giving, that would, you know, the way that the process had kind of been scripted in the past, which is yet to be determined for going forward, but it would be something similar, is there was, there is a group called the Kettle River Watershed Authority, which is an advisory committee for us as the Regional District. And that advisory committee is composed of about, you know, 30 different representatives from different, from the forest industry, from mining industry, from First Nations, including representation from provincial government that don't have a vote there, for example, including environmental groups and so on and so forth. That group sets the recommendations for us as local government to derive the work plan for the staffing that we have had, which has been contract help so far, to pursue implementation. And so if that piece, so if pollutants, for example, and trying to figure out what do we do as local government to navigate down that path, if that was decided, that was a priority for that work plan, then that would be pursued.
All right. Moving on to item 6A, the monthly highlight reports from department managers. The recommendation is committee to hold receives the monthly highlight reports from department managers. Please, Councilor Ross. Councilor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think it's nice that we have a little bit of extra time on the agenda today. It's not too full so we can get a bit more feedback from our managers about the different bullet points they've listed here. First of all, it's nice to see the wavefaring signage go up in town. I'm just wondering if we could have a little bit of an update on that and also how that ties together with the expo sign that we've been looking to have redone. I believe staff said originally that that would be done at the same time as the signage was placed at that site, so if there's any more info on that. And also there was a bullet point about repairs to the dike, refining funding requests from the province and the South Rocco River Bank assessment. I think those are all really important to the public, so if we could have some more information on those three items.
Mr. Mayor, the wavefining signs, we have about half of the ones up that are scheduled to go up this year, so we'll see a few more come up over the next month or so. The reasoning behind that was to try some out, get feedback, and then proceed with the other ones. So we've already received some feedback from the businesses and so far it's fairly positive. This seems to be working out very well. I know I like the way they turned out in terms of the aesthetic. Looking at the expo sign, I'm waiting on some quotes for the lettering. So we're still looking at Grand Forks in lettering. And part of the reason why it's taken a bit longer is we're trying to source local where possible and finding people with the right equipment to cut out aluminum, lettering is proved a little bit more challenging to find, although I think we have the right person enough. So we should see that before it snow flies, but at this point, waiting for quotes to make sure that we meet our purchasing policy on that.
Just a quick follow-up. When we had originally approved the wavefaring signs, I thought that they were just going to be a few along the highway, but now I see them throughout downtown, so I'm just wondering where the sites are that you've selected to put them.
So we had started off on the highway and then received feedback from highways that they didn't like other people's signs along the highway. And that was one of the initial delays with the project. The sign project had been split into a couple of different phases and one of them was the on our local streets phase. So that is what we have implemented. It focuses on two routes through town, well, or a few, if you kind of divide them into east-west as well, but basically getting people to turn off the highway at either one of the lights downtown, either at Second Street or Fifth Street. And then as they're going along there, what do they need to know so that they can turn either onto Market or onto Seventh Second or get to the campground? So if you imagine taking a turn off either one of those lights, the signage is designed to guide you after you've made that turn so that you eventually wind up back on the highway after you've done your shopping.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief update on the dike repairs. So we had a few locations that were in need of repair that we did emergency works during the event. So we had an engineer on site and we re-excavated those areas and then put in dry material, compacted to the specifications and brought them up to the height that they were previous to the flood. And supposedly in as good or better condition as the rest of the dike there. For funding request to the province, we're looking at many different sources, either through DFA, we had our EMAP application in which we're hoping to hear back relatively soon. But the federal government was, you know, saying that they were a week or two behind in going through that process, so. And then we had the NDMP grant application that we put in, so we're waiting to hear back from a few different areas. Also dealing with our insurance, we went around with our insurance agent, or not the agent, the restoration company and kind of got an update on where we're at with all our things that were affected during the flood. So we're continuing to work on all of that and hopefully we'll have some good news. And for the South Rocco River Bank assessment, this again was not something that we had put aside funding for, so we're just looking at the different mechanisms that we could use to get that assessment done. But I think we should have that sorted out by the end of, end of this week, hopefully. We were going back through the different, I guess, provincial asks from previous EAFs and different things, so we should have that secured hopefully this week and then we'll proceed as soon as we can organize the engineer to come and do that.
Yeah, I know that was a big concern for the, some of the residents there in South Rocco, getting that work done before the spring freshet. And so once you have the assessments done, you'll be asking for provincial funding to go ahead with that work? And also we did receive a petition from resident, quite a few residents in Johnson's Flats concerned about restoration work before the spring for them as well. And I know part of that's in the Regional District, so it gets tricky, but is there anything being done to look at restoration works in Johnson Flats before the spring?
I gotta let Graham speak to the secondary part of the Johnson Flat piece. With the South Rocco piece, we're looking to get the assessment to go through, to give the province what they need to see whether it's funded or how we can fund that. So we are trying to get the funding in place because it's not a small project to get that done. So it's a $780,000 estimate that we had from the engineer. So we're going to work through that if we can get that done. We definitely will because there would have to be some changes because the fish window is over. So we have to factor that in and whether that's going to be an additional cost or how much cost that would be. As I said in the meetings, the public meetings, there's no way that we'll get to everywhere prior to the next freshet. So once we get the funding secured, we'll have to look at prioritization and see what the overall plan was with the council initiative, council direction and hydrologist report and see what we can get done. But maybe Graham can speak to that a little bit further.
Thank you. So in terms of the south end of Johnson Flats, there's two avenues to get at. One of them is through the qualified professional. That was the approved funding from ENBC and Flynnard. They are supporting the Kettle River's role in the environmental assessment and looking at shoreline erosion areas and looking to strategic priority and prioritizing some of those areas where there should be follow-up work. So given that it's a rural area, it's kind of fine fitting underneath that overall program and has been flagged for one of the sites that they should be looking at. So that's a conversation we're having with Jess Mason's group, with the Kettle River Watershed Authority. In terms of the many kilometers of erosion protection required and emphasize a green infrastructure and that, and I think that was flagged in the disaster mitigation and at a patient fund, but as, you know, as David noted, we won't be able to act on that until next fiscal if we're approved. So if there's critical areas that are showing likelihood of failing in advance of next freshet, however, we're going to look at every opportunity for funding some bank protection on those. Sometimes the funding just is not available until emergency is about to happen. So if we know about them beforehand and can put some estimates in place, we can hopefully advance that time scale a little bit, but that's the challenge we're pursuing.
Councilor Hammond.
Yeah, this might seem trivial, but I'm glad to see the Kettle River, Silver Kettle sidewalk completion. I drove down there the other day and I noticed that somebody driving towards me was actually driving on that new pavement thinking that it was an extension of the road. So you probably got plans to put a paint a line through there to separate it from, I'm assuming that's what's going to happen.
So unfortunately, Ms. Yates isn't here to answer as she's overseeing the project, but I know from having been involved in various stages of the project that yes, there's plans for line work and even looking at the potential of rumble strips for another bump that you would hit when you're going over into the scooter lane there. So it's not implemented yet, but yes, very much aware that people love to use as much of the road as they see as road and do need to segregate that out.
Thank you, Mayor Conroy. Yeah, I had a couple of questions in a couple of different areas and I see that you don't have anyone here from building inspection and bylaw, so I don't know if anyone is able to tackle these questions. And then the other one is in procurement, so possibly Julia could answer that. But I'll just quickly, building inspection and bylaw one. Under general there, it says concerns escalating regarding flood damage properties where little to no repair activities occurring. Approximately 50 properties are sitting idle up from 25 a month ago and at least 10 are unsecured and awaiting attention from owners. I'm just wondering if there was any additional information that we could receive on that item?
Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Yeah, so Mr. Bruce and I have spoken about the scope of that being potentially to be funded, so we're looking at avenues to bring in funding for securing those homes, especially where people have walked away. So the building inspector has talked with all of the, or most of the property owners after a letter sent out last month about seeing what their intentions were and that kind of thing. And I think some of them will be requiring some help in getting that work done. So he's getting an estimate on having some of the contractors potentially install that and we're just pursuing to see if we can get that funding through ENBC.
Thank you, Graham. You're a good person to have here. I guess my, another question would be, it's gone up 25 from a month ago, is that just the fact that additional ones have actually been identified? I mean, they were there all along, they've just been identified. And then the other question would be, the people whose properties those are, are they part of the pool of people who are now identified as homeless needing some sort of intermediate shelter for the winter?
Sure. I can speak to some of this more in our update when we go through because you'll kind of see it in sequence. Just but dealing with just the securing of the properties, the number did go up in September and in some cases there were more insurance issues that showed up early in the fall, potentially after the resolution about tent for buyouts. And in some cases, they certainly were just, some work had maybe started on cleanup but then nothing happened after that and it took a while to identify them. So I think the letter that David Bruce sent out asking about tensions, that definitely helped clarify some of the numbers and it did increase them last month.
Councilor Hammond.
Well, and then I had another, so another question in building inspection and bylaw enforcement was the 11 active transient camps, would anyone have any information about those? Okay, then, okay, then the next one was under procurement. I'll just go there because we don't have Mr. Bruce to answer the other ones. So under procurement, thank you for this area. Actually, I don't think we've seen this before on the managers' reports and I really appreciated the information that we received there. The one question I had was the sole source for electrical meters. I just wondered what that pertained to. Well, it's not you, sorry. Or whichever one can answer that. It's not staying on.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that was for our electrical department. We have a certain type of remote meter and we have the remote reader equipment already in place. So if we were to switch suppliers, we would have to upgrade our reading system and our computer and that. So we, we're actually going from about 12 different three-phase meters down to two. So we're trying to streamline that because we have to send them in on a certain schedule to make sure that they're verified correct. So if you have 12 different styles of meters, you have to take a batch out of each of those 12. So it's really going to cut down on some of the workload around the meter reading and the verification of the meters. So we stuck with the, it's Itron that we've been using, so we stuck with that manufacturer for this, so. manufacturer for this. So it's similar to, I guess, our Neptune water meters. If we were gonna go purchase a whole bunch of meters for replacement, then we would wanna keep with the same to not have to split the system, I guess, when we're reading or have two readers. That's the reason for that.
These meters aren't, don't have anything to do with the homes that have been flooded?
These ones in particular, I don't believe so. We actually reduced the number after this. We had a purchase order for $75,000. We reduced it to 50 because we had to juggle some of the purchases. We need some transformers and stuff because of the funding and that. So we had to shift some of that around. But these particularly are for businesses downtown. So there will be, you know, a certain percentage of them, for sure.
Yeah, I have a two-part question. First one, I'm kind of excited when I see that we've approved and processed seven new business licenses this past month. Is everybody in staff here that can confirm that these are like bricks and mortar businesses that have moved in? Okay. The other question is building inspection and the year-to-date construction value. Year-to-date is at $7 million and change. And last year's entire year-end was 3.7. So we're up significantly, which is really encouraging. I'm just wondering, out of that value, I know you say there was 106 applications for flood damage repairs, but out of that $7 million, how much of that is new build or not flood-related?
I don't have a full answer, but the estimated DFA payout for Grand Forks is about 2.4 million. And then you'd have to factor in some insurance on top of that to give some perspective on what would be flood-related. And then the other major project is the Transition House, which I think is 1.2 or 1.5 million, which of course is a new, but nonetheless one that we saw coming that we won't see every year.
This is, I think, for Dave. Just wondering, I might have misheard you, but what's the rationale for building or repairing the dikes at pre-flood level and not bringing them up, you know, 80 centimeters or meter higher?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We put them back to the way they were previous because of the funding. So when we applied to the province, they said, okay, you can do temporary flood protection works. And then once that is done, you have to remove that temporary flood protection works.
Okay, so it's because it's temporary?
Yeah, it was a repair of the temporary measures that we requested from the province. And we were not 100% set on what the new flood construction level is going to be set at.
And some of the dikes, when are you rebuilding that area at the spot?
Well, the dyking was built to the standards of the day. And the standards are changing, which again, after this event, they will change again. So.
And the location may change?
Correct.
Your worship, through you to our CFO. The one property that the city was declared the purchaser, is that, was that flood damaged or is that a property that is of any value to the city or if we end up owning it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That was actually one of the burnt-out houses on Donaldson Drive.
Also for CFO, she says she attended a recovery workgroup meeting for floodplain property valuations. What does that mean?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually gonna defer that one to Graham because he has a bit more information about that.
Yes, I'll speak briefly about it. It is on part of our update on the recovery planning. But the key with the buyout program, land reinvestment, et cetera, is that the province doesn't have any policies, programs, working corporate memory on how to do it. And there's been some initial discussions to see what, what kind of question should we be considering? If this were to happen, how would it be a success? So I'll be talking briefly about that. But it's kind of, it was a what-if conversation that started with the province. And I think we'll be going deeper as we get closer to the question of how the province will be supporting the federal disaster mitigation and adaptation fund. What role will the province and federal government place, play in funding land acquisitions for dikes as well as buyouts for floodways and green infrastructure and that kind of component. So it's basically a follow-through on the request from council to ask the province to undertake this work. They knew they needed to talk with us about what could this look like. So that there's gonna be, I think, some policy development through the policy group that'll have to be part of this with the province.
That's great. Obviously, a big task to undertake. My one concern with this is the structure of how we're setting all this up. Originally, these working groups were going to be reporting back to council representatives through a policy group that met with the CAO and council. So because of the issues we had with the other working group and minutes and all that, I'm just wondering if there's a reporting process for this group to be reporting back to elected officials?
There is no group as of yet. There was a conversation, a meeting with provincial officials who wanted us to know, wanted us to help them answer their internal questions. So I think any policy development that comes out of this from the regional and city perspective would be through the policy group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just speaking to the minutes of the other group there, and I did want to make a note, that was not a working group that was formed nor endorsed by the boundary flood recovery team. We put them up on the website just for the sake of clarity and because there needed to be a spot to distribute them. But that was not a working group.
All right. I'm gonna call the questions. All those in favor, receive. Anyone opposed, so carry. All right, moving on to 6B. Our CEO and Recovery Manager Flood Recovery Operations Update. Recommendation is, committee at a hall receives for information the flood recovery operations update.
So I just wanted to provide a bit of an overview, just for some clarity. This is like the first time we've had a huge flood recovery team in our community. And I think that there's been some, some kind of questions on actually what they do and where they report to. And I just wanted to give a little bit of an overall structure. And if Graham feels that he needs to chime in, he can do that. And I think Director Russell, he had something from the policy side for the area de management. So the role of the flood recovery team. So here we go, like this is nothing new. We had a catastrophe, flooding disaster. And so of course, we own it up pre-op, which all emergency operations are based on this throughout the province. This is the normal standard piece. Of course, the regional district is the lead on this, the ones that put together the emergency management process. And of course, we have city staff that also included into the actual EOC in order to get all the needs that we needed for the emergency operations. And of course, once that threat of flooding is passed, which I don't know if it ever does, every spring we seek to get a threat, but the imminent threat for the last one, of course, you have to get focused on what the recovery looks like. And so this, this again, of course, is something on a larger scale you've never seen before in our community. So congratulations, we have a team there. I don't know whose baby that is. But anyways. So when we first started putting the recovery team together, and I use the word me loosely, I think mostly the regional district was together in that, and, and, you know, some of our staff, and just trying to decide on how, what we needed to make things work, how it was gonna look. And so this was the rudimentary structure that we started out with back in the day. I'm pretty sure everybody's likely seen something of this. There might have been a couple of different changes, but this is basically what it looked like. Much of the same as what our chart looks like in the operational piece of City Hall. You know, we're looking, this is all operational. And so the same thing as what that looks like. So purpose of the flood recovery team, I tried to find a sentence that kind of said it all. And so I come up with this. Flood recovery team, for those that maybe can't see the writing on the back, is an operational group that retains and works with specialists and professionals in their rightful fields of expertise. These professionals provide the necessary advice and recommendations that determine the best course of processes required to reinstate community and infrastructure to ensure restored and enhanced safety and livability within the area. The recovery team manages the initiatives. And I think there was a note here from Rowley that kind of says it all as well, is that the team, including Graham, they're here to coordinate and communicate the needs of the community, make recommendations to decision workers, and they are the champions for the community. So the recovery group, of course, is umbrella. I said this before, that the regional district is the head of the management program. And because we have the majority of the flooding, we play a huge part in it. So I just want to make sure that, you know, as much as I hate to say it, we're still not total equals in here, but we're, we're sitting here in the regional district, sitting about here. So it's, it's close. So the recovery team is answerable to the province, mainly through the Emergency Management BC, of course, which is a little bit different than a standard role that you would see from a city or a chart. Like we all answer to the province. But this one here has got a little bit more nuts and bolts, and is I'm sure that everybody's experienced. And of course, that's through Flynn Rord and the EMBC. So that's kind of where most of the funding streams are, all of them are basically coming from right now. So local policy groups, so the city council plays a major role in the decision-making processes, as it does with anything from the city. This is, this is nothing new. And so applications of granting streams that involve municipal services or infrastructure, municipal lands and servicing directions. So any potential development initiatives or partnerships. So if there's any kind of land piece that needs to be dedicated or considering of land for use of one of these pieces, of course, is coming to council. Funding request, request that the city would augment during the current financial plan. I think there was a couple of those pieces that our chief financial officer has already brought that shows some of the pieces that we've had to augment in order to facilitate some of the pieces that are currently going. So we have also the appointments of the policy participants for the recovery team. And I believe Graham just spoke a little bit about this. So the initial one that I have on record was a couple of weeks after the flood, where there was a policy group that sat kind of in the cemented part of the RDKB that kind of talked about what we have to start with next. And of course, and then there was a subsequent one on September 24th, which just happened. Up until then, pretty much everything other than what council's seen, of course, the big decisions and everything, have been operational in nature. Any city bylaws or policy changes? So of course, anything that affects any of our bylaws or policies would automatically come to council. And also there's the communication conduit to the community, and it's usually through the mayor. And so traditionally, as we saw with the EOC and with recovery now, of course, we know that we've kind of stretched that out a bit more now. We have situation reports that are provided from the group. I think they're almost weekly. And they get sent to his worship and to myself. And I believe that his worship transfers it off to council. So council does have a weekly update as to what's going on. Those situation reports are basically a lot of operational in nature. And from that, the messaging comes out that gets updated. I believe the flood recovery webpage that basically gets updated as much as, I'm not sure exactly what the time period is, but I know that it's a continuous update for that. So the attempt for communications is ongoing and it's getting bigger and better. So additional council participation. So here's some of the things that our council has been involved with. As far as the recovery team goes, okay, so of course, we've had several conversations with the premier and the ministers. I know that the mayor's been on the phone personally. I know that council's had a few talks with them. Of course, the community and neighborhood meetings, that's been ongoing just about every second week that we've been doing. Workshops and meetings with recovery teams. So as we were progressing, we tried to provide the adequate workshops that council could feel free to ask questions as we were going through this process. Of course, additional meetings with provincial staff and local level stakeholders. I think that there was one, one very large one, we barely had enough room in here where we had the province come in and his worship was here, and several members of staff where we kind of started the preliminary pieces with the province. And of course, UDCM meetings, we won't forget about those. We had, I think, a perpetual meeting for four days that we, I'm sure that there's no minister and no piece that's to do with flood recovery that certainly doesn't know Grand Forks by now. And then, of course, the meaningful conversations advocated for community needs that council members did as well on their own. So here's what the org chart looks like. I did this very rudimentary. I know that Cab and I, people have made something a lot more prettier than what I've got up here. But I just wanted to give everyone kind of the idea as to what the full org chart looks like today. And of course, there's several layers. We started out, you know, with the operational pieces. And now we've included the ministries, our policymakers for the RD and council. We have our policy appointments, appointees, and the public messaging. So you can see there's kind of a bit of a circle going around that actually kind of, kind of explains kind of what we're leading to right now and how complex it is and how many people we actually have working for the better needs of the community to try to get, try to get everything going. And so a little bit more of the communication efforts there. So I'm not gonna read these out. We know that the EOC has their mandate for communication. The recovery team has their, their rules and regulations and how they want to get things apart. Of course, the public has received things from the internet as well as the community meetings that we have every couple of weeks. And then, of course, the situation reports that I had aforementioned that come through just about on a weekly basis. And that's about it. If anybody has any questions for myself.
Thanks for that presentation. It seems like it should all be working, but for some reason, there just seems to be some breakdown in communication in some areas. And I almost feel like that chart should have been flipped the other way with council at the bottom and the teams at the top, because there's not a lot of concrete information that I'm finding useful coming from those groups that's filtering its way through to council. I have to say, the Economic Development Group has done a pretty good job. We've had a couple of meetings with them, and I felt pretty connected with what they're doing. But when it comes to the housing assessment, I mean, we saw in those minutes that Habitat for Humanity had 28 modular units ready to roll out back in July, and council had no knowledge of that. And it said that the hangup was land being designated from council. And we had no idea. It would have happily designated land for Habitat. So, I mean, those communications never happened. And maybe there was a reason why that never happened. But it's just not filtering back to council so that we can effectively understand in detail what's going on. The weekly updates that are coming through, at first I found helpful. Now, the language in them, I find is confusing and not really clear. So I don't, I don't want to be critical. I want to do it in a way that we can sort of try and smooth it out. and maybe come to some sort of understanding how we could better the communication process.
Your worship, just a clarification. I was at that one meeting where I think it was a comment from one of the opponents that was around the table with regard to land dedication. It was part of the notes, but it wasn't noted that I basically told them at the meeting that we do have land dedicated. And so it maybe just wasn't captured in the notes, but there was knowledge that there was land dedicated.
From the provincial government? So was there a request put into the provincial government for Habitat's houses and nothing?
Thank you. So the 28 modulators, I think going back to the notes from these meetings of the ad hoc group, they were notes, they weren't bed minutes. The language in there is not clear because they weren't, the discussion was very conceptual from groups that basically weren't directly involved in operationalizing the type of work. They're talking about issues and challenges. I don't know that the 28 modulators were actually ready and ready to go. I do recall Mr. Hough speaking about the capacity in the regional built facility to do panelized buildings, and that they probably could be made available with enormous need time, and that the funding would need to be committed now. So at the time, we had put a draft proposal to the province to get feedback on. They said, "This isn't ready to go, you need more data." And then we brought more data. More data was the other answer. It was outside of the way that they, any of their programs existing for response and recovery. And so unfortunately, we lost out on any advantages of lead time because there was no confirmation of processes and frameworks from the province at the level. It's just not there yet in terms of how it will work. There's a lot of confusion about what was possible at the beginning. I think that's a fair thing to say.
The other information that needed to be communicated to council was that when this project didn't work out, that we lost our team lead, that Bob Hough resigned as a team lead, as one of those pillars. And that's important information that council needs to understand. If this wasn't under the recovery team, we've got our team leads communicating them. We've got three staff members at that meeting. Were there other housing meetings that happened then? If this wasn't under the recovery pillar? If there were other housing meetings that were under the recovery pillar, that wasn't communicated back? And it wasn't communicated back that we lost our team lead because Habitat was not able to be effective because of whatever measures? It was frustrating, and he resigned.
Your worship, so as far as the team leads, if we want to take and look back here. So here's the team leads as far as the little pillars down at the bottom here.
It wasn't originally that Bob Hough was the team lead.
He was at the beginning, and then it changed out. These people here are basically like when we hire managers that are not statutory officers. Okay, so if I needed to hire a planning technician, it doesn't go to council. Okay, these are the people that are working for the recovery manager. Okay, they are working for the community. These guys are the champions. They go out and they find these. It's no different than if we need a contract to go get some gravel somewhere, we don't take it to council. It's in our budget, and so that's why it's set up like this.
I could just weigh in on this one briefly without sounding derogatory. The statement you made that the province wasn't aware and needed more information is, it's a bit confusing to me, because I had a conversation with Premier John Horgan. Council were privy to that conversation, where he had stated that they're drumming out those modulators out of Kamloops like hotcakes. We just need to know how many, and we're ready to have your back. So I'm wondering where the link is missing here. Counselor Drip?
Thank you, Mayor Connor. Yeah, I'm glad that our CAO brought this schematic back, because this is essentially where I see some of the issues, the potential issues that are taking place. And it's in the direction of where people are communicating and what the line of authority is. When you've got the RDKB directors and the City of Grand Forks off over to the side like that, and yet, most of what the city, you know, we are the ones, the city has been the recipient of virtually, you know, the most of the catastrophic destruction. And I understand we've got a provincial policy that sets up the flood recovery system. And that's necessary, because floods don't just happen in one community. They happen over a region. And so that's very necessary, and for governance purposes and for provincial purposes, looking at that. Like, I totally get that. But I feel like for us as a council, because we have had, because we've had from the community a felt responsibility to know and to be able to provide information and decisions that we really have not had much control over. And we hear of these things by the by, and that's not wrong, because that's the way things are set up. But it's been frustrating. And going forward, I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm not going to be on council, and you know, God bless those people who are, who are going to be dealing with over the next four years this thing, because it's going to continue on. Could this schematic be changed so that the RDKB directors and the City of Grand Forks get moved over somewhere into the line of delegated authority? Somewhere between either recovery manager and your, the different pillars, or between recovery manager and provincial staff? I mean, is there some way that they could get pulled out of that ancillary place and inserted more directly into the chain of command?
Director Russell first, then Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Butler.
Thank you. Okay, I have three things I want to highlight here. One is, the RD is owned just as much by the City of Grand Forks as it is by Barrow Grand Forks, or Greenwood, or Midway, or any other elected local government in the boundary. Okay? So any box that says RDKB Board of Directors, you, as the City of Grand Forks, sit on that table. That is a challenge. I am losing my patience, frankly, with the notion that this is a challenge because of the delegation of that authority to the regional district without owning the fact that you sit at the regional district. Okay? So I need to be really clear about that. There's a seat at that table for the City of Grand Forks. There's a seat at that table for Barrow Grand Forks. Like, there is a seat at that table for 11 other local governments across the country. The other piece is, it is fine to say that Premier Horgan has units ready to go. Who is going to pay for those units? So there are all sorts of organizations that have modular units that they have been trying to sell us throughout this process. I'm sure they've been contacting me as an individual. I'm sure they've contacted much of you as elected representatives as well, saying, "Here, we have offers of units. Here, we can sell you a modular unit for $800,000." Well, so we either ask the province for that money, or City of Grand Forks could identify that they want to tax for that, right? Or want to borrow. That decision is the decision that we have to make. So far, my understanding of the City of Grand Forks' decisions have been, we want the money on the table from the province. We want the province to say, "We're willing to pay for these things" before you either tax for those or borrow money on behalf of your taxpayers for those units. That's an important distinction. So us, as on a policy level, our involvement is not to say, "We want this organization to deliver this style of unit on these timelines." Our obligation is to say, "We want to deliver housing." These are our strategic objectives. We want people safe. We want people to be warm through the winter. We want to not spend taxpayer dollars previously, right? Those are the sorts of decisions that we have to make, and I feel like we have made. At our last policy group meeting, we recognized we need a clear conduit to the provincial policy level to be able to say, "These are our strategic objectives. This is what we want to meet, and you need to help us meet that financially." You are free, as local government, to make whatever decisions you want to make in terms of trying to deliver assistance to improve well-being in your community. But don't then pawn that responsibility or the lack of that decision off on someone else, please. Okay? The third piece I wanted to highlight is that, your comments, Counselor Butler, about Habitat for Humanity's role. Habitat for Humanity was identified as one of the potential team leads for that housing pillar, right? My understanding, and I think you understand that as well, is that the rationale for Habitat for Humanity for not engaging in that role is because it's a huge risk for their organization. It's a huge risk for community futures. It's a huge risk for boundary family services to take on this kind of capacity in our community when, if the province doesn't come through with that funding. I think Habitat recognized that they are going to be identified, they're going to be targeted with part of that notion, that they didn't get something done on behalf of our community. And so, you know, that board, I don't know the details of why that board or Bob, personally, I cannot speak for him. But my understanding is that the rationale for not going down that path was because he was concerned, or they were concerned, about the lack of the province delivering that funding. And all of a sudden, Habitat being identified as part of the bottleneck for delivering housing in our community. It's outside of the mandate of Habitat to engage as a team lead for community recovery. It's outside of the mandate of these organizations. And they've been, in some cases, it makes sense for them to take on that risk, and in some cases, it doesn't. And that's why, in the housing situation, from the very beginning, Urban Matters has been identified as that potential assistance to deliver that piece, which is probably the most political of all these components, right? And they have been the consistently identified component there to deliver that housing piece, right? And it makes more sense, because they are able to take on that risk of, frankly, if there is a challenge in the province delivering the funding, that they can walk away from this community. Habitat does not want to walk away from this community, and wants to be sure that they're doing what they can within their mandate to help the community.
Before any other counselors, I just want to weigh in on a comment that Director Russell had made in regards to the modular units with Kamloops and Premier John Horgan. Unless there was a misunderstanding, you had stated that who would be paying for it? I think the clarity was quite there. Council were present at that conversation, that there was never a question of who was going to pay for it. Obviously, the province was going to pay for it. What he needed to know, it was my understanding by that conversation, is what our needs were, how many units, and that, what I think, was the disconnect there. The province were prepared to have our back according to the way that conversation went. So there was not a, to my understanding, there was not a question of who was going to pay for it. They were going to pay for it, because it was going to be initiated even through BC Housing at that point in time in that conversation, unless I'm incorrect. But I had counselors present. So that's the way the conversation was led by Premier John Horgan. So it was up to us to give him the numbers, and apparently, then they would have acted. That was my understanding.
Have you spoken to him since?
Can I speak to that?
Sure, go ahead, Director Russell.
So yeah, my understanding, because I asked the recovery team in terms of the details on the kind of flow of events for the housing pieces. So my understanding is that we had a draft proposal to the province, from that recovery team. In terms of conversations with our provincial conduits into the government, team government, we had the sketch of what we were trying to ask for ready in June. And then we had a revision to that, and that conversation kept going. So we had a new proposal, an updated version of the same, in July, in August, in September, okay? And in my understanding, again, is that the feedback from the province, especially during the summer, was, "We need more data. We need more concrete understanding of what your need is before we can identify and deliver the funding for you to implement this project." That's a huge risk. That, to me, absolutely, right? We've had a concern here where we identified a need, and we were kept being told, "We need more data before we're going to deliver the funding to deliver this solution." Well, frankly, who cares if we have all the data by the time we're in August? Because we know we have an issue, so at least let us implement part of that solution. And this is where we have no policy liaison at the provincial government. So we have an operational conduit back and forth, which is not our business, frankly, as elected officials. We have no way. So sure, we've had conversations with John Horgan. We've had conversations with all of those relevant ministers, and all of their deputy ministers, and all of their assistant deputy ministers. But where is the back and forth part of that conversation? So it's fine to hear, "They've got our backs." But the reality is, it's October, and we only just now got approvals on part of that funding.
Just briefly, see, I wasn't aware of that, that that occurred at that timeline, since June and July. Had I had that awareness, I basically would have been jumping all over them much stronger than I did. So I was under the impression things were being run in the background, it was being taken care of, and there's no disrespect intended on that comment. But I had limited information, and that's probably where the disconnect was.
I'm sorry, I have to address that. Mayor Connor, you sit alongside myself as the leaders of our respective organizations, the City of Grand Forks and the Regional District of Cooney Boundary. We have an obligation to ask questions about the things that we need answers for. Just like the information that's being provided for us, we have an obligation to get back to our respective organizations. So I cannot understand why it would not be obvious to all of us that if we have a recovery team in place, that there is a solution that they are trying to champion for housing from, you know, week one post-disaster. And that conversation has taken place. That information has been there.
Only to state that you had stated you had that information. As you just stated, you were aware of what was happening with the province. I wasn't. So unfortunately, I think in the recovery team's role, even in the EOC, there is a policy that elected officials cannot participate. Well, unfortunately, I disagree, they should be able to participate, to find out firsthand, especially when you have a community which has a huge amount of residents that were basically impacted by this disaster. And I'm not lessening the effect on the regional district area, where there's much lesser amount, because your own CAO had stated they would deal with those individually. But we have a huge amount of constituents that are affected, and yet, we have limited amount of control over our own destiny for our constituents. And that is the element that I feel in disagreement with.
There is a very, we have a regional emergency response plan for the regional district. The regional district includes the City of Grand Forks, just like it includes all of the other local governments. It would be nonsense, in my mind, for each of us to have our own independent emergency response plan, because generally speaking, disasters are not following political boundaries. In that emergency response plan, there is a very clearly defined role for the policy group. The policy group is all of us as elected representatives that sit at the regional district table. So you, as the City of Grand Forks, you are the representative for this council at that policy group. The role for that policy group was circulated by myself to all of the policy group representatives in the midst of this disaster. The role for the policy group, as we have rolled into our recovery team, has been more complex to identify, because we do not have a playbook like we do for emergency response, for emergency recovery, or recovery from an emergency, from a disaster. So there is a role, it's clearly defined, and it was communicated.
I agree with Director Russell fully, what you just stated. But you see, I find it ironic, in the case of the flood toward the end of May, that Premier John Horgan contacted myself as the head of this community, and he did not contact the regional district. So there again, you'll have to try to explain that to me at the time, why he would call me on a Friday night, and want to discuss the me on a Friday night, I want to discuss the situation, where we're at and what's happening, because he had seen the need for this community of the enormous disaster that occurred. And again, I'm not trying to make, you know, condescending remarks on anything in regards to the regional district, I'm in full respect of the policy and the way it runs. I just find it ironic that we had such a greater need here, and as you'd stated, sure, regional district, this is the way a policy works, but unfortunately, the constituents do not approach regional district, they come to our council and myself, and they have their concerns, and if we don't have answers, we look pretty foolish.
So, I have to, I have had many conversations with the premier, as well as the ministers, I just have not been talking about them as much, all right? It is your job as the representative for the regional district on behalf of this city to be engaged in this process and to communicate back to your council.
As to the best of my ability, I have the limited knowledge I have. Councillor Thompson, then Councillor Butler, and then Councillor Tripp, I believe that was the order.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a few comments. The organization chart, and members of council wanting to have a change on that so that we've got more authority, that's not our job. It's the job of the Emergency Operations Center and the Flood Recovery Team to do their jobs. I don't think that we need to be in there trying to micromanage any of their work, I think that undermines what they're trying to do, and I have full confidence that they are doing what they could do far better than any one of us could with the knowledge and the contacts that they have. It's unfortunate that there seems to be bickering going on between who knew what and when, and so on and so forth, that does not do anything to resolve the issues that we have. So, I would like to encourage all of us to come together cohesively as one group, work together, and not hang out anybody to dry for having left a position. When I say that, I mean particularly Bob Hough. I don't think it's fair to him or to Habitat for Humanity to have brought that out in the manner in which it was, because it wasn't factual. And I think Mr. Director Russell has explained that extremely well, as to why the organization felt that they couldn't participate in the housing strategy. And I think that rather than trying to undermine and demean those that are doing their job, we should be extending our appreciation to them for what they are doing on behalf of our city and the entire area, not just Grand Forks, they're dealing with the whole boundary area. So, while we did receive the breadth of the damage and the disaster, we have to keep in mind that there are others also who were negatively impacted by this. So, let's just come together, work together, and move forward, because this discussion is not putting us on that path.
So, I'm kind of confused, I'm not throwing Steve Newton and Habitat and Bob Hough under the bus here, I just am not understanding what's being said, because I emailed Bob Hough and asked him what had happened with the housing pillar, and I'll read you the beginning of his email, I mean, I'm not going to expose all of it, but he says, hello, Julia, I notified Steve Newton near the end of August that I could not continue as the head of the housing section. My decision to not proceed with the housing section was also based on the level of criticism or blame that could be cast by people venting, and he goes on. But he was the head of the housing division up until the end of August, he says so himself, and what you said is true, I mean, when he couldn't get the housing rolled out, he didn't want the criticism and blowback on Habitat for Humanity, absolutely, but he was, he was up on stage at a recovery meeting as the housing team lead, so that's all I'm saying. And I think he's a great guy for the job, I'd like to know more of what he was doing, and I think that what could help with the communication here is, like in the community charter, it states when council creates a committee, that there's a representative from council on every committee that's created by council. Now, these committees technically have been created, I guess, by the regional district, but if they were committees of council, we would have a representative from council on each committee to be able to communicate directly back to council, so you don't have to go through three different stages to get that communication back. So, if the next council, you know, saw fit, I think it might be easier for communication if council members each sat at one of those committees so that they could see directly what was going on. Because we've got people, like, I mean, I know you don't want us to be bickering at each other, but we've got lots of people out there in the community right now that are really upset, and for us to sit here as councillors and just say, oh, well, that's too bad, let's just pat everyone on the back. I mean, I know that you're working really hard, and I can see your frustration, and I'm really sorry to come across that way, but, and I think there's going to be, like you said, some good announcements with some funding that's just come through, but we really need to tighten up this communication. And as you said, our rep on the regional district absolutely needs to be bringing information back to us, we need to be having more workshops together as a council to talk about the questions we have and communicate, not just once every two weeks, the meetings, or we go to the meetings at the high school and we hear what's being presented to the public, but we need to be sitting at each one of those committees to be engaged, to understand the information, not to criticize, but to have clear communications, that's all I'm saying.
Just one very brief thing.
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, just one very brief thing, just to clear it up and hopefully get Bob Hough entirely out of the area of concern here. During the summer, there was a process undertaken to, A, get funding, and B, get each of the team lead organizations in place. The process took some time for working through the contracts, both on behalf of the RDKB and the board, to figure out the logistics and everything else. There was no contract, you know, with, at that time, with Habitat for Humanity for undertaking this work, they were seen as a key local part of the housing supply recovery, and that's why they're kind of identified and up there on the stage with the team leads. And so, essentially, there's a leadership role that they have played and continue to play in terms of thinking about supply and how to make the recovery housing work. The overall scope of planning, risk management, et cetera, was a role identified in terms of the long-term strategic planning through work with Urban Matters, and their initial planning contract got underway early, and then looking at the capacity that they had as an organization to deliver, and also that they weren't directly in the community, I think that was, you know, essentially the opportunity for, we weren't getting funding, there was not a chance for progress going forward, and I think Bob and Habitat saw the risks of that going forward. There's been a real lag and a lot of impacts, so I just wanted to speak to clear up, there wasn't a resignation, there was a desire to not go forward with continuing with going into that potential wall of being a lead organization of the housing recovery without any funding access, that funding guaranteed. So, it's a complex process, some of what I spoke of is operational and is not, this is for information only. There are other items in the question that refer to roles on committees, and I'm not going to talk to that at all, but I believe the mayor was casting that much, thank you. Go ahead, Director Russell.
Thanks. So, as to the first part, I also feel, Councilor Butler, that you, by bringing Bob into this conversation, the implication that I am taking from your comments is that he identified a local bottleneck in that process, and I think it's important that you make that very clear, whether you were bringing him in as, into this conversation, identifying a local bottleneck, or you recognize, as I understand it, that his concern was more based on the concern of lack of funding from the province and that bottleneck in terms of delivery and that risk to him and his organization.
So, yeah, to clarify, I'm agreeing with what you've said on that point, but my main issue here is with the communication structure, coming back, that he was identified to this council as our team lead for housing, and then to find out at the end of September that he had resigned in August, I thought is an important piece of information that council should have been aware of, that he was no longer our team lead. And it was just a concern, because we hadn't heard about his 28 housing units, that, I mean, that's it, that sounded like a great project, and for not a word of that to have been, through that, you know, telephone, game of telephone here through five different people to get back to us, there's a breakdown in that communication, so that's when the frustration comes in, because as, I guess, as the regional district chair, you have access to more information maybe than other members of the board or us as councillors, so you have that information, but we don't, so that's where the frustration comes in, there's probably a really good reason for the way the project didn't roll out, but it just hasn't been communicated back. So, when we hear that there was 28 houses ready to go in July, and we don't have all the information, it seems like a big loss for the citizens, and that's frustrating.
Okay, I don't know if the Q is here anymore, but that's okay. I know he had, that trip was waiting for a while. Go ahead, Director Russell, if you want to respond to that person.
Yeah, if I may, so, I mean, quickly, I don't know any more details, I know probably, frankly, less about that particular, the particular group of modular homes that that organization had at the ready. My role, again, is simply, from that perspective, identifying what the kind of the need is that we're trying to solve and figure out a way to get that solution on track. And my understanding is the province has not yet, or throughout the time thus far, has not been ready to come to the table, certainly at that time in the year, to say we have the money to support that. So, there's lots of opportunities to get solutions, but if nobody is at the table with the money to pay for those solutions, how does it go forward?
It seems like a perfect match for the housing hub project that B.C. Housing has, I don't understand why.
And I just want to, just to speak to that piece about, that you're asking about communication, right? So, to be clear, I do not have more information about, I don't think about any of these pieces other than those pieces that I have asked for information, and whether that is through requesting a meeting of the policy group with the management committee and with the CIOs and with the recovery team, or otherwise, it's because I'm asking the questions and getting that answer, right?
But you have the ability to do that as one person, we can only do that as a council.
That's right, but let's be really clear then, okay? So, and likewise, when we're talking about what this looks like and your comment about getting a council representative on different committees here, I would push back on that, because if you're applying all those boxes on the screen, ought to have a council representative, there are operational groups, like in this case, what we identified, those two team leads, so we wanted to have local, we wanted to build capacity in our local organization so that we would have more permanent solutions to these problems than we would if we just brought in outside consultants to help us deliver our quote-unquote recovery plan. So, it's not, I don't think it's our job as elected officials to be involved with these groups that we have asked to, again, to coordinate and communicate, you know, what the needs of these respective kind of pillars in the community are. They're not in place to be decision-makers, they're in place to be compiling and coordinating. In some cases, they're involved with the delivery as well, which complicates things. So, you know, Community Futures is both coordinating and communicating economic need through our downtown business groups and so on and so forth, but they're also then engaged in part of the delivery of, or implementing some of those solutions, right? So, there's a distinction there. In those cases, in implementation, sure, that's maybe an open question, but that other piece, I don't feel like there is. The rest of it, when we say that this kind of map of this organizational response to how do we do recovery is overseen by the regional district, the oversight here is by the management groups, which are a couple of representatives from city staff and a couple of representatives from regional district staff, as well as a couple of elected officials from the city side and a couple of elected officials from the regional district side as policy appointees, right? It is done by the regional district, which is the City of Grand Forks, right? So, it is, in some ways, nonsense to say we want to have greater City of Grand Forks authority here, because the City of Grand Forks does have authority, as that box that says RDKB is the City of Grand Forks, right? And in this case, the policy group is essentially identified as the City of Grand Forks, being the key impact area and the rural areas around, right? That's the identification of how we identify who the involved policy group is. It's not the mayor of Trail, because this disaster didn't impact the City of Trail.
But that policy group, that's, I think, Councilor Ross and the mayor sit on, has only met twice since the flood, and I haven't heard anything about those two meetings. I mean, we've had a huge disaster, you'd think there needs to be more communication coming back to our reps than just twice.
Coming back to your reps or coming from your reps? And again, I...
Well, no, it comes back through those groups up to the policy appointees who then report back to us, but those policy appointees have only had two meetings in that policy group to get the information from those lower groups.
Sure, and we can discuss this at length, and more communication is always going to be better, right? And I don't disagree that we could have had more communication coming from the recovery team to the elected officials. But it's also important to recognize, you imply that I have access to more information. Well, realistically, I ask questions when I need to ask questions, you have to ask questions as well, and those questions have to be pushed forward from your representation, right? So, your representative, right, as the mayor at the regional district table, is the one to ask those questions.
Totally agree, yeah.
Okay. Councillor Tripp.
Thank you, thank you.
Then Councillor Ross, and then Bless.
Thanks, Mayor Conrad. You know, and I know that I'm, all of us, I really believe, who are engaging this right now, have only one thing in mind, and that's to make this a better process and to get some answers so that we can get the help and the resources to where they need to go. I mean, when you see something leading, you want to get, you know, you want to get what's needed there. And it's unfortunate that Councillor Thompson assumed that in my wanting to maybe make a rearrangement there on the organizational chart was meant somehow to disparage those people who are doing the policy work, that's absolutely not the case. We are, everyone is doing a fantastic job and completely out of scope from where we've ever been, so uncharted territory, and we all understand that. So, I think the assumption needs to be that all of our comments and all of our concerns over this are only help related to wanting to be a help and not hindrance and not criticism. Where I see this policy group having a little bit more clout and effectiveness and moving more into the mainstream line of communication is to push forward some of these things that the operational groups are running up against brick walls with, over. So, cannot, so if the policy group knows, okay, we've got this fantastic plan, we're ready to put it out there, but, you know, we don't have the money, or, you know, this province is coming back and giving us ridiculous hoops to jump through and raising the bar, raising the bar, can't the policy group then, once they know that, they can go back up the food chain and say, hey, look, you know, you guys, further up, provincial staff, premier, provincial government ministries, you guys are not coming through for all of our people on the ground who are doing the work. And that's what I see the position and the function of the policy group, they're there to assist the other ones get done what they need to get done. And so, that's why I see that, you know, little box over there, meaning if it were to move over a little ways over here and get a little bit more direct line, maybe that would provide the help that, you know, that this group is going to need moving forward.
Just a quick comment on what you said, Director Russell, in regards to the, that you would push back of any councillors being involved or elected officials, I disagree with that on one basis. The elected officials would not be present at any of these meetings with the experts to make any comments, but they would be able to bring stuff back to council, where then we could have a discussion, and then, as their representative, I could ask the questions if I know what the questions that council has. It's not an element that they would be involved... It's not an element that they would be involved in the operational aspect, but to hear what the proposals are from the operational team, be it the engineers, the experts, we could have our own dialogue amongst ourselves as council. And then legitimate viable questions could be initiated by council through myself. And there would be the questions. That would be a different type of process, but I'm sure one that would work.
And just very quickly, that's just the kind of conversation that would happen at the policy group meeting to be able to say, this is what we would like to see in terms of change to this organization.
No, but I mean, councillors are on a committee. I'm referring to what Counselor Bumner said.
No, 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 I'm saying that that's a, that's a, that's a perfect example of the kind of conversation we could have at the policy group meeting to say, look, we'd like to implement a change here.
Right, exactly. That's it. That would definitely then create better communications, I feel. Counselor Ross and then Les Johnson.
Okay, so on September 27th, I did participate in a policy meeting. I was able to participate, I participated for three hours. And the bottleneck was identified as not being at the ground level, not being at the grassroots, but it was at the federal and the provincial level in terms of getting the funding released. It's been a hugely deep and complex academic exercise in all these studies and wanting more information. I'm starting to think either they're not understanding the information and there's a breakdown in, not in communication, but it's not here. I did suggest that the policy group do send, I think we need a subcommittee of the policy group, which would be an advocacy group and something that I've been deeply involved with in my, in my career, is sending a small, very small delegation of policy experts, people who understand what's going on, what has been provided to the province and to the federal government, and to sit down in a room with decision makers in Victoria or Ottawa and say, what part of this don't you understand? So you're right on, you're right on there, Beth. I would like to see an advocacy group come out of the policy, the policy group. We've had the academic exercises with the engineers, a hydrology, you can call it hydrologists, the housing and disaster specialists that are veterans in their field. Sending more information is no longer appropriate now. We just need them to roll up the funding. We also have forgotten here the federal representatives. Our member of parliament has been here at least five times. Here, he was here less than a month ago to get a check in what's going on, what do you need? And he understands his role as a policy expert and as elected official, that his job in Ottawa is to advocate on our behalf. And so I know that Richard Canning is doing that. And he, he's very contactable. I don't know what our MLA is doing for us in Victoria. She, it's her job as well as an elected official at that level to advocate on our behalf. And I think that is a bottleneck and that's where it's falling down. I think as we begin to rebuild here and move forward, I would like to see an advocacy group. I acknowledge the good work that was done at the UBCM. I appreciate that. I have a lot of respect for those meetings. But now we need to go with Graham, a couple of people from the policy team, likely Rowley, and people who understand what it is to advocate and sit in a room and answer those questions. We need that conduit that Rowley has referred to. The bottleneck is not here. The information has been very clear. When I hear that you're not hearing this, you're not hearing that, I don't know what you're not reading. I'm sorry that I haven't been able to report about the previous policy meeting that happened on September 27th, but I, it was an intense meeting. And I, I'm waiting for the minutes for that meeting before I share what happened. But the frustration in that meeting was that we keep pushing up information and the bottleneck is somewhere there. We need to get in a room and help people understand and hold them accountable for what they have promised, what they have promised us. But let's not forget the role of the federal government and our MP is also planning because some of the funds are going to come from the feds. And he is doing a great job and he is contactable. And I know the next time he's in the writing, he's quite happy to meet again back at the city.
Thank you, Councilor Ross, that's great.
Just very briefly to add on to that, there was a conversation at our last flood recovery meeting on Wednesday about bringing both MLA and MP into a future meeting. Both of those requests have gone in. And although the MP Canning's won't be able to be here for the next meeting potentially, he has agreed to be here on Friday, this Friday, he will be here for a couple hours. And so the timing on that hasn't been set yet, but he will be here probably prior to lunchtime on Friday.
And that's like his seventh time.
What about our Emily?
I know through conversations that she has heard that invitation. I haven't had, I haven't gotten a response in terms of lunch meeting here.
Les, do you read the message?
Les Johnson, gftv.ca. In, another thing about Bob, he's the executive director of the Southeast Habitat for Habitat. It's not Grand Forks, that's Southeast BC. And they put in a lot of projects into Grand Forks and they have to start working on projects in other places like Castle River Trail, et cetera. And he was, he told me basically he was seeing the potential for being put in that position of being housing lead as being a possible real problem for reputation when it didn't work out well because of the problems not coming back with things. But also they, he has to concentrate more on other communities to get Habitat doing stuff there because they've been kind of, Grand Forks has been overrepresented in their efforts. So, you know, he's, he's got a job and that's his job, not being the housing lead for Grand Forks only. Who else would do the Habitat side of things? And as far as this thing of, I don't, I'm going to bite my tongue here because really I chew on politicians' legs enough and I just hear this communications, lack of communications thing here. And I don't really have anything good I can say to you as a body and to you as our representative. So I'll just keep stump on all that right now because it's not very nice, but I want to say. So you can have a rest of the meeting.
Counselor Havick.
Yeah, but this has been dragging on for so long and I know we're really frustrated and we know we're waiting for the answer to come back from the, you know, we're waiting for some resolve to come from the province. Maybe it's time to get the media involved. Maybe it's time to have some friendly communications with Global and CTV and make the province aware of what we're going through. Keep Grand Forks in the forefront, in the news, and put the pressure on until the government realizes that we're not going away. I think we need to make some noise.
Well, God help the next of our doors here.
Mr. Worship, just a clarification that this is not a committee of council. So it's a totally different setup than that. This was born, as I said in the beginning of my presentation, that it is born to the EOC in emergency management. And so it's like a quasi-government, it's another level of our local governments. Now, I think with regard to things that are happening now, I know that Mr. Watt does have some information that he'd like to give to council on some updates. And perhaps you might want to take that in now to see what he has to say. I'm just going to, I'm just pointing to it.
This is going to be up on the screen so that we will be two crane units.
I can pass it.
Oh, sure, postpass around. Quite available in the meeting, just me too. So just noting, this is draft and my team has not seen it yet. But I just, the way of visualizing, essentially, these are the items that were on discussion in terms of strategic priority and sequencing of major project initiatives at the policy group meeting on the 27th. Do you want to copy just for, you know, like you're taking notes? Probably not on the screen. Should I just take that most over maybe? Actually, I don't, it's probably not on the screen. Okay, so we'll kind of go through by section. All right, so yeah, what we'll do is go through by section. What I've put together is kind of a five-year timeline for what recovery looks like and what type of activities would be occurring at different flip points in time over the next few years pending funding. And so the information that I've included here is the component. Oh, yeah, totally. That will be better. How's that? Is that like more visible? Okay. So we'll look at the activity area. We'll look on whether or not the funding has been provided yet to the source of the funding. You can kind of, actually, I'm just going to hide these too. They're kind of, you can ignore them because that just creates a formatting for the columns. And then basically, starting in June, June of 2018 and going through, you know, basically May of 2023 as five years. That's kind of at the outside end of the type of infrastructure work that can come over time. But we'll kind of go through the major portions and talk about the components that are in here. The point of this isn't to get into the details of how much funding is available each one. We do have information on that as well. But I think it's best at this point just to kind of go through the major project areas and the type of timelines that we anticipate. And so basically within, this hasn't actually refreshed. That's okay. I can speak to the stuff that's not in there yet. So in recovery management, there's basically manager, deputy manager. Currently, there isn't a deputy manager in place, but there is funding there to bring in additional capacity. I was the deputy manager until Steve Newton was on as manager through the summer and then took over at the beginning of September. So we're looking at the roles, capacity needs and potential work there. There's a strategic planning and risk management component that is a shorter term contract. We're just waiting on funding announcement from that. And that's to kind of put together the overall long-term recovery plan and align all of the strategic objectives of the, identified by the policy group and management group to align the city and regional district approaches to these. And then there's various finance, logistics, administration, communications and planning, or the other two functions. And not all of those portions are fully funded through this time, but various pieces are. So we do have a finance person in place now putting structure to all the various components and like who's got some admin support and that kind of information. So most of this is through, what I've identified here is the ministry, Emergencies Management, EMBC, really is through the Emergency Program Act, the Provincial Emergency Program. That is the well-established approach for dealing with funding emergency responses. And there's some pieces that are easily able to be put into the recovery framework that they have. Any place where EMBC isn't listed, that's where it goes to the province or other sources of funding. You'll see provincial, federal government, that kind of thing in there. So kind of talk about the challenges that brings about because anywhere you see province, there's been a holdup in funding because it's outside the eligibility under the Emergency Program Act. So critical infrastructure, this is the big ticket item and it's also the five-year timeline. So right now we have essentially through disaster financial assistance formula, there's the involvement of our manager of operations, David Reed. And essentially, the way that it works is through DFA, flood damage repair, that kind of thing. There's some backfill capacity in operations for that involvement. But I think it's quite a heavy involvement on part of operations. They're, they're doing quite a bit of work there and that's something that is certainly recognized because of the amount of damage to city works and the amount required to be involved in dicking and flood protection and other sources of erosion protection within the city. It's going to be a big job within the next five years. But taking note though that this critical infrastructure includes erosion protection and finding, funding for over erosion protection out in the broader electoral areas of the regional district. And certainly David Reed has been over to Midway and Greenwood to support their critical infrastructure needs following the freshet this year. This comes up a lot with 2019 emergency planning. So basically, this is something that is already underway and we've done some initial kind of identification of scope issues, needs for communication and engagement and collaboration in advance of 2019 if we're looking at the potential of a high snowpack and any sort of freshet. The Regional Emergency Program with Chris Marsh, ourselves, you know, David Reed at the city and also our regional and city fire rescue. There's already initial scoping going on and what we're anticipating is some joint collaboration, kind of capacity building, information happening in the wintertime and making sure that we've got all those planning pieces in place. Part of that includes the learning from the 2018 freshet to look at what lessons were learned. So you'll see on some funding charts after action review. The other work this winter, David spoke to it earlier, just about the critical erosion protection, areas where infrastructure or multiple homes are imminently at risk and have been identified as such. We're looking at all avenues of being able to find funding for doing that work in a safe way before we get to freshet. So we don't want to be putting an excavator in the floodwatering game. It's not a, it's not a good situation to be in when you can't see the toe of the bank where you're trying to put some rocks. So those of you who are looking at the sub-terrible site know that that was happening very like, partly because of the, oh, please don't tell me that. It didn't actually crash. All right, the flood protection funding plan, it's essentially started this summer with the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund in July. Another proposal went in at the end of August with the National Disaster Mitigation Program. What we're looking at this October, November, probably to December is the detailed costing. And that detailed costing would be supported by the province. That was a request that went into the province and is part of the funding analysis that we're waiting on from Cabinet. That would enable the province and engineers with the city and regional district with the program to actually do detailed costing so that we go into any funding proposals such as the DMAP with very, very good estimates. This would also allow us to start to put together better estimates of cost of land acquisition, of buyouts that would be required for the infrastructure, the green infrastructure, floodways, that kind of thing. This is kind of, no matter what happens with that grant program, this will be the foundation for future work on all the critical infrastructure, leading of course into the engineering and design, land acquisition, construction and reporting. When you put all those components together of a capital program, it's a five-year process. Now, how the land acquisition feeds into this is obviously it can't, it can't go about until there's funding in place. What was, what the province requested a couple of weeks ago was an initial discussion about what, how the land acquisition program could work, what were the technical details. I think there's policy and governance details as well that actually belong with the policy group and that will probably be part of the follow-up discussion. But it was a peer-to-peer discussion within people in the province who have been involved in land acquisitions and expropriations and various infrastructure projects. And they were, you know, sharing their expertise with the provincial disaster recovery branch and getting a kind of a state of affair update from us on that approach. So I think there will be a request coming forward for follow-up policy work on that discussion shortly. The land acquisition, of course, this is all prioritized. Areas where critical infrastructure or core economic areas are identified and funded first, that part of that inland acquisition required for that would happen before we can get to some of the larger areas. But it is, it is a period of time that I think we could probably see some design and consultation happen this winter, once we have a sense, or winter, spring, once we have a sense of the funding availability on that.
Can I, just a quick question? So for land acquisition, then would we be looking at potentially having something to offer the people who are looking at being bought out by May? That would say May or June of next year?
Yeah, that's, that's a good feeling of timeline, partly because the DMAP and the provincial backstop of it won't be, we won't know until probably March. And so after that, there will be some program design work to, you know, be completed and then we'd be able to start that process then. Under the National Disaster Mitigation Program, I think we'll find out about that sooner than the DMAP potentially. Might be somewhere. than the DMAP potentially, might be somewhere timelines. But that would start right away for the downtown components identified in that project.
Thank you.
When we met with the premier about the land required for the people from North Ruckle, for example, he suggested that there could be a land swap with Crown Land. I'm just wondering if that's been looked into and if they've located any area.
It's a nice little discussion. It was identified by counterparts in the Forest Lines and Natural Resource Operations. They undertook an initial scan of available properties in the area and had some correspondence with both RDKB planning, city planning, and the recovery team about how this could support. One of the challenges with Crown Land in the area is it's not in the core development areas that's been identified in the city's approach to planning as well as the regional district. The regional district is really clear is that new development and density belongs within serviced areas and particularly within the city. Keeping rural Grand Forks rural and agricultural land intact is a major, that's part of the official community plan. And so that's recognized as well in ours. So I think the land swap component has some possibility, but probably not at a scale of all of the areas. But for certainly the rural properties that are most at imminent risk, I think there's a great likelihood of those being able to be part of that as the province proceeds. It's something that can be done at a lower cost potentially than straight buyout and selling. So I think the province definitely does want to explore it. But it has major planning implications and would have to go through RDKB planning processes and RDKB work for anything outside of city limits as well as city planning processes for any changes within our boundaries. So infrastructure, of course, connects directly with housing. And this has been the largest focus of the recovery team's work. And yet, we've also been juggling capacity on it because it's been a real challenge to support it. So there's a team lead through Urban Matters. There's also some consulting work that Urban did with us early on on the initial recovery plan and the long term housing recovery. Some outreach work, basically Rachel Warner has been the lead on that. It was funded through little pieces of various parts of funding streams that were identified. But unfortunately, it was kind of, it wasn't given its own position ideally early on because it was kind of outside of the box, I guess. But what that team was able to do with Rachel, one or two other short term staff and some volunteers was build the case, get the data, and also establish a relationship with the community that is ongoing and is really feeding into this other component of case management. We still don't have funding on case management. Essentially, it's actually something that's underneath the wellness pillar. But a key part of it is about housing. So I've represented it here, that there would be four case managers who are actually able to work with the individual families and help them in the transition from their current place of maybe not having housing or maybe having significant needs related to potential buyouts. That needs a personal level of support. Right now, everybody either calls Rachel or calls the manager, and it's beyond our capacity. The major funding announcement last week, the 2018 winter housing relates to hotels, motels, tourist accommodations, and modular housing, and that was affirmed by EMBC. This was basically about one quarter or one third of the original proposal discussed back in June. And so there were items within that proposal discussed back in June that weren't eligible under the Emergency Program Act and within that framework. And so I think in terms of learning from the process, I think clarity from the province early on about where we can get different parts of the funding for this would have been really, really helpful. We could have probably started that sourcing of modulators earlier if we had known in July what was eligible under this. But ultimately, we did receive components eligible. I think it's 46 or 44 households that have a critical need for housing and don't have the means otherwise. This will help that supply happen. It's not the most ideal from the long term perspective because it doesn't help as much investment in the local community that recovery team had been hoping for with the initial analysis and work. The replacement housing plan for, this is for homes that would be in an area of future flood protection infrastructure or floodways and lowland areas that are at risk, so buyout areas. That long term kind of support has been requested and it's pending. And likewise, any implementation of replacement housing programs. I think that's something that will go through, certainly go through the city and where applicable, the regional district planning processes and involve council in terms of where those long term, you know, long term units should be in the community. The official community plan has really strong guidance about building within areas of existing infrastructure and for using infill, establishing various higher net city within areas that can support it and having walkable connected communities. So I think that is kind of the policy basis for the overall replacement housing support. But if there's funding options that allow for multifamily housing development in key areas where it can be supported, then that's, I guess, basically a part of the balancing act. I should just mention kind of the nonprofit, nonprofit role in housing in Grand Forks is really important to discuss because we have several different societies here that have small projects, whether it's, you know, the Duke Board Benevolent Society, which recently just gave up management of the Parkside Villa to BC Housing or in other circumstances, Phoenix Manor. There's several small organizations, and a lot of the boards have been at it for some time. And they actually don't have a lot of capacity for taking on new projects, building new governance models for new types of funding and bridging support together. So an initial discussion of the recovery team, a request out to the various organizations was to ask, you know, who has capacity for being involved in socially involved, public involved type housing in the future? I think that led to the discussion that happened this summer without actually being a committee. It's more like it's testing the waters, who actually could be involved here. But one thing that was identified as a funding request within the long term housing plan was for outside support to come in and do capacity building for organizations and for the community to, you know, come together and actually provide a coherent kind of housing program. And that would certainly involve council and the city role as part of the partnership. But that funding hasn't been confirmed either, so we're kind of pending on that. So under wellness, I think people recognize the stress of the community, especially for those who have a lot of uncertainty about their future or in the short term, where they're going to be able to stay this winter. The basis of it, the team lead position or backfill is funded through Boundary Family Services. And there's some outreach and case management that is still waiting funding. And this is a real bottleneck because this was critical back in July when it was requested. And Rachel's assessment team was asking personal questions about how people were doing. And the idea was that they would be able to refer those with the people's permission to the case management wellness group to help people. And so that information got stale because, you know, people change in two months. Some people figured things out and moved forward in their resilience and recovery, and other people went downhill. So this is something that in future recovery efforts, I think, needs to be emphasized as a critical early issue and will certainly be part of our recovery teams to be back to the province that we can't let people drop in supporting their recovery. There's been, I think, some really good work recently with mental health, Boundary Family Services, and Health Emergency Management BC have undertaken. And that's definitely enabling quite a bit of outreach. When it says food, I make that flood. Sorry, this is not the version that updates from the server. I think that's what wasn't working. But anticipating what will be required next spring in supporting people's needs, that's certainly on the wellness team's mind. Economic recovery, the team lead portion is funded. And then how the impact assessment that Boundary, or sorry, that the Economic Development Association BC worked at in the economic recovery plan, we're not exactly sure exactly where the funding is going on that. And so Jennifer Webmore's team basically said this needs to be done. We'll figure it out. That work is underway. So the BCEDA team has been to town a couple of times now and has interviewed, I think, virtually all of the affected businesses that were available to be interviewed and looking at what was the fiscal and business continuity, the impact of the flood and recovery, including all kinds of rebuild issues. You know, I think we could probably refer any questions to Jennifer's group in terms of how some of that work is going in the next steps. There's been some funding requested for business recovery that has not been funded yet. And then there's also the downtown business recovery planning and a separate application to Royal Dividend Fund. And I don't believe we've heard anything back from that. Is that correct, Ed? From the RDF? No, nothing back. The one thing that was funded for feasibility and business planning is not strictly flood recovery related, or actually mostly not. But there's support for Emergency Operations Center and having a community facility suitable for responding to an event like this and supporting a resilience center. That was identified in the community center feasibility as one of the outcomes of it. And that the feasibility or business case conceptual development for that has been, has, I believe, been funded. I'm not sure where the announcement is at on that, but.
That's just a new development.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you mention that the other night? Chris, do you?
Yeah. So it is a big deal, but it's not directly supporting recovery. It does, I think, help the long term.
Absolutely.
And environment, I find this really interesting. The mechanisms for supporting things like contamination and river erosion permitting for, it took a little while to get this underway, but helping put landowner applications for erosion control in context, they're funded quite easily. Debris cleanup, things like that were actually all funded directly under the EPA framework. And so basically, the role of the environment team in there is fairly defined in within narrow parameters that don't deal with big picture cumulative effects, forestry, et cetera, but do deal with the environmental impacts and recovery around those impacts. Not necessarily providing funding for restoration in every case, but certainly providing assessment, monitoring, permitting, surveys, that kind of thing. And so that's definitely, they've got an ongoing role quite a bit in the next several months. I believe there's actually going to be some shoreline cleanup happening this weekend and in the next couple of weeks. You can find out through the Kettle or the Watershed Authority for the work that might need some help from volunteers. So zooming out, and you can see it on the print off, you know, on one page essentially, there's a huge amount of work, mostly concentrated in the first two years, but having tail ends in terms of infrastructure projects, capital projects over the next two to four, potentially five years, depending on funding. I think in best case scenario, I'd like to see this, you know, that we would be done by 2022. But, you know, certainly some projects will take longer than that overall timeline. The DMAP project itself, I think, needs to wrap up by March of 2023. So that's kind of the outside end of that end. So that's about the gist of the presentation. I've been working on some milestone charts and trying to make this slightly simpler in some ways, but they're not ready yet, so for future update.
Counselor Trup.
Thank you. James, great, just really to see it all in one place and to see how the different areas are being handled and managed and where the funding is coming from and what's pending and so on. Just one thing, it wasn't up on your sheet there, I don't think. Under housing, we have HEEP on ours. And I believe there was that six month extension given for the HEEP program, which will take people through to March or April. So I'm just wondering, there's a little bit of a gap between that.
For some reason, they didn't update in the version that Daniel was on the screen.
Okay.
I exported the Excel file.
Oh, okay, you exported it.
It actually works.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, so I can get that up on screen pretty quick.
So just a question there, being that because there is a couple of month lag there in between land acquisition, do you, I don't suppose you'd have any idea whether or not the province would be considering extending that just based on the needs of the community at the time?
Yes, that's a good question. I think, and you're right, I did put in the printed version and it's on the version that's on my laptop screen, the HEEP extension connected with winter housing. I think that the HEEP as it's being refined right now is related directly to the financial needs of people who don't have housing for winter. By the time we get to springtime, hopefully, other mechanisms for, you know, replacement housing, et cetera, are underway. In some cases, people, their insurance issues will have been figured out, places will be habitable. So I'd see it tailing off. I think the province is aware that there could be still some outstanding need. Something that I also haven't represented on this chart is the significant voluntary charitable sector involvement in this. And we're anticipating Mennonite disaster services, other housing organizations, Habitat, various others basically coming back in terms of that support in the New Year. So, you know, and there's some work underway right now with the Phoenix Foundation to be able to receive and allocate funds for supporting needs that are outside of these fundable areas from the province. There's a whole bunch of other work that's happening to fill the gaps in between programs. I think that might be an area as well for those who still have need in April or May to have some support. Yeah, there's a whole other side to this that requires a lot of work.
Thank you.
Les, do you have a question?
Yeah, the, I was looking at the thing about business recovery and the fact that basically nothing's happening there from the province. When the people from High River were here talking to the business community, the guy who was in charge of all the projects basically said, the fact of life in Canada is that most businesses or small businesses cannot live for three months with their business interrupted the way it has been here and survive. And we've already gone four months with that with a lot of these businesses. Do you have any projections? How many of these businesses will be around when support finally arrives? Do you guys have any idea like that? Jennifer have any idea?
I can't speak for Jennifer in this. I don't have a strong expertise in this part of the recovery and the economic development aspect of it. I certainly have heard some of Jennifer's concerns and those others in the community who are aware that some people may not be coming back with their businesses. Perhaps Mr. Gates could add into that.
As part of the outreach that was done with the BC Economic Development Association, the survey included some of those questions as to, you know, how are you feeling about your ability to keep up and stay up? And what is the impact being? And so there is some preliminary information on that, although I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor of receiving? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, moving on to 8A. Under proposed bylaws for this subject matter is review of proposed smoke free bylaw for corporate services.
Thank you, Eric Conrad. At the September 4th Committee of the Whole Meeting, we brought forward the draft proposal for the smoke and bait free places bylaw. The intent, for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, February 13th, was to fill in gaps in provincial and federal legislation. Following the introduction of the bylaw, council at that last Committee of the Whole Meeting resolved to table the bylaw and have staff return it for discussion at this meeting. And the intent there was that councilors were going to be attending UBCM and thought they might have an opportunity, and I'm not sure it sounded like. they might have an opportunity, and I'm not sure it sounded like it was a pretty busy meeting, but might have an opportunity to, to discuss this with some other municipalities who are bringing similar bylaws in. So just as a very quick recap, federal government bill 45, the Cannabis Act comes into effect on October 17th. The provincial government enacted section 2.3 of the Tobacco Control Act in, in March of 2008 that prohibited smoking in public workplaces, which covered indoor areas and outdoor working spaces. In May of this year, the province brought in the Cannabis Control and Licensing Act, which basically prohibits smoking and vaping of cannabis in areas linking back to the Tobacco Control Act. So basically, they've said, we already had areas defined, those areas are going to be expanded beyond tobacco into cannabis as well. Then it also added some additional areas in specifically playgrounds, sports fields, skate parks, and other public places where children may gather. They've also specified use in vehicles and on school properties. So these are all areas that are prohibited by provincial act. The proposed bylaw that we brought forth in September addressed many of those areas already prohibited by the provincial act and the idea there, by enacting the bylaw locally, local bylaw enforcement has a say in it rather than, we have no choice but to call the R.C.M.P. and hope they're going to, to do something about it. So anyway, pursuant to the, to the resolution on September 4th, bringing it back and maybe get some additional feedback from council to staff on direction for this.
Counselor Byler. Counselor Tripp.
So thank you for bringing this back and explaining that again. It refreshes everyone's memories and I understand now why you're repeating what's already in the provincial legislation so that we can act on it locally. That makes sense. So at the U.B.C.M., within the motions that were presented by different municipalities, there was a motion that was adopted by the U.B.C.M. and it read, "Therefore, be it resolved that the U.B.C.M. lobbied the provincial government to take whatever measures necessary to regulate the consumption of recreational cannabis in the same way they do with alcohol and prohibit consumption in public places, vehicles, and workplaces." So I think that can give us some direction here. There is another motion that was also adopted to increase the distance that you could smoke or vape to 7.5 meters from six meters from doorways, windows, or air intakes. So that's something else that can guide us in our decision.
Yeah, when I looked at this, I see that it is a sort of one bylaw fits all in the sense that it's dealing with any products that are smoked, consumed in that way. And I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see a, a bylaw specific to cannabis with basically the same directives as the one has for, for smoking and other combustibles. But my issue and the reason why I'd like to see a second policy and, and a standalone policy is, is my concern about people who consume it on public streets. The smell I know is very offensive. It's far stronger than cigarette smoke. And I think that people would feel more comfortable if they didn't have to walk down the street and smell it. I may be very, not liked because of that, but, but that's, but that would be my suggestion. And the people who I represent here on, on city council have expressed that to me, that they would like to see it not smoked on city streets. The other issue that I had was there is a part of this bylaw that says, "Bylaw does not apply to a designated smoking area established for the purpose of an outdoor public event with an area being determined by and with agreement." That, I understand that that is kind of like what you might set up for a beer garden, but beer doesn't float out into the air and cause a smell, you know, many hundreds of feet away where cannabis does. So what I'd also like to see is, I'd like to see that provision under 3.2A removed.
Les Johnson, taxpayer. Okay, but just two things on this. One, not everybody finds the smell of cannabis objectionable. Yes, some do, but others don't. And so putting in a secondary bylaw because it defends some people's sense of smell, I'm sorry, that just seems like extra baggage on legislation, which we'll probably ignore it anyways. But I also wanted to call your attention to the fact that in Ontario and Toronto, they're having elections as well, and they're talking there about allowing alcohol to be consumed, like beer and wine, in city parks. And also, if they're going to allow alcohol to be consumed in those areas, they're also talking about the possibility of having cannabis consumed in those areas because it'll be illegal product. Now, you may not agree with that, but this is what they're talking about in the other end of the country. In Philadelphia, apparently, they've instituted a program where every week during the summertime, they have the craft beer people come up to a different park and they basically establish for that, part of that day, a beer drinking area, a beer garden that moves from park to park from week to week. So not the whole world is so uptight and prudish about the prohibition of all this consumption of these things, legal products by that, as we appear to be here, just so you are aware.
Counselor Allen.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're becoming a little more civilized and cultured with our tolerance for craft beer, craft ciders and wine. And, I mean, I'd love to be able to see an event take place where we don't have to put people in cages where they can walk civilized with a glass of wine and interact with others. Now, regarding this bylaw, I think the regulations that we have in place already that the provincial government has put on for smoking would be sufficient. I think what we're looking at is a strict, is a restricted cannabis bylaw. And I agree with Counselor Tripp that it should be the secondary one, the one that's already existing from the province on the smoking bylaws in that it's restricted for public use. When it comes to a designated area, I'm not in full agreement there because an event, something like Canfest, they have a designated area. You're not going to find GFI putting in a designated area or the Fall Fair putting in a designated area. It would be up to the event organizers to do that, and I don't think you're going to find that too frequently. But as far as throwing all of this, anything smoking, maybe all under one bylaw, I think is, is really restrictive. And as far as the smell of cannabis, I agree with you. I find it offensive. It also makes me sick to my stomach. And I've actually been in a room where people have smoked it and I myself have felt the effects of it. And if I don't want to get high, I don't want to be around it. Okay? Whereas you're not going to get stoned from, from cigarette smoke. So I think that they are two different products and I think if people want to use cannabis in their own homes or their own property, then that's fine. I think that it should be restricted from public consumption.
May I just, thank you, Counselor Allen. The other thing, like you mentioned about maybe the, like GFI wouldn't use it or, or whatever, I guess one of the safeguards there too is that people would have to come to the council just like they do for a beer garden.
Yes.
So, yeah, that is another safeguard that I haven't thought of.
Yeah.
Counselor Byler.
So I think an easy way to just include both of them together in the same bylaw is for staff's sake, you could have section 3.1, no person may smoke tobacco, and then list the already established provincial regulations so that we can monitor that through our bylaw enforcement officer. You'd have to remove from section 3.1, public sidewalks, I think is included there. Yeah. And then instead of, and then just bump everything else down and put 3.2 as no one may smoke cannabis and then list pretty much the exact same thing, but include the city sidewalks. I think that would probably be sufficient to...
Counselor Tripp.
If I may suggest, if, if that were something the council were to decide on, possibly what you'd do in that second section is on item number E, where it says on a city street when used as part of an outdoor public event, just delete when used as part of an outdoor public event and just go on a city street.
That refers to smoking period.
That would, that would...
It's not just cannabis, that's everything.
No, in the cannabis section.
In the cannabis section.
Like in the cannabis section, you'd, you'd preclude that, that part of the sentence in, in the cannabis section, not in the...
Right.
Other.
You're talking...
It's also very restrictive on section C with the court commercial zoned area of Market Avenue between Riverside Drive and Fifth Street. It's pretty specific.
That's all within six meters of the doorways though, so that's why it's restricted because there's nowhere that would fall with, outside of the six meters of doorways and air intakes. That's what we were told of the last meeting.
But then that would apply to the provincial street.
Yeah.
But this is very specific to Market Avenue.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, that was the designation that was also used in Roseland's bylaw, although
of course their main street is, there is wider spacing, so they actually specified that. So we did include that, but you are correct that our Market Avenue, the buildings are so tightly together that there's virtually nowhere in that area that would not be covered by the six meter prohibition. So that could easily be struck and, and just picked up under, under a different heading.
Les.
Through you to Counselor Byler. Did, did I hear you wanted to bring city streets back, sidewalks back into this, all public sidewalks? Yeah, I'm just curious if that was what I heard.
The direction that we heard at the U.B.C.M. from all municipalities in B.C. is that they wanted the provincial government to limit cannabis to private residences and exclude public sidewalks and streets.
So you were talking about smoking cigarettes?
Not cigarettes, no.
Okay.
I was saying to separate it into two sections, one for cigarettes, one for cannabis.
I'm just wondering how this, how this manages the folks in our community that have prescriptions for use. I know there's folks in the community that are using cannabis, they have MS, severe depression, epilepsy, and they are often vaping or in order to stop themselves from trembling, going into a seizure, and also so that they can have an appetite in order to eat. So how does this deal with those folks? Are they no longer able to access Market Avenue as people who are on prescriptions?
So under the provincial legislation, there is, is not exemption for that. The areas that are defined are, are all encompassing.
Okay, so, okay, so this is my concern is currently, I know there's folks are on Market Street, they're often going into a restaurant, before they go into a restaurant, they'll have to stop with their caregivers and Medicaid, and I know for a fact that this is what's happening. So they're no longer allowed to do that. So we're actually discriminating against some of our folks in our community who are disabled.
To be fair, that is also covered by the provincial legislation, so it's actually at the higher level that that is occurring. But on the, the way the provincial legislation is written, they're also prohibited from, from vaping in their vehicle before going into the restaurant.
So I guess if it's covered by provincial, we can't downgrade that provincial law, but I, I would think common sense would say if they have a, they have a medical card that they carry, I believe, right? So, I mean, I would be comfortable that if somebody had a medical card, they could show that as an exemption. But I don't know if we can legally do that.
Question? Question. So if it's already covered by the province, then why are we even talking about bylaws? Like, it's like we're doubling up on what the province has already mandated.
Yeah. As I mentioned in the, in the introduction, one of the reasons we are duplicating that is that it then gives enforcement power to local bylaw enforcement, whereas if we rely on it strictly under the provincial legislation, then we have to go to provincial enforcement, which in Grand Forks would be the R.C.M.P.
A response.
I don't know why we have to be so heavy-handed here. We have so many folks in our community and I don't imagine right now anybody's going to call the R.C.M.P. when they see somebody in a wheelchair vaping because they are, they need to and they are already. So in order for us to now ask our bylaw officer to tell certain longstanding citizens in our community, good folks, that they can't be doing what they need to do, just seems like so heavy-handed and lacks compassion. So I don't, I'm not going to support this.
Counselor Allen. Thank you, Counselor Allen.
I'm probably showing my ignorance here, but on vaping, is it, is it similar to vaping of cigarettes?
It's odorless.
Okay, so if, if, when you say vaping, are you telling all vaping, like including cigarettes? So a person... Yes.
Well, as, as written, but that's why we're having this discussion.
Okay, because...
If you feel that should be removed, then...
Well, I, I think, yeah, I mean, if vaping is, there's no odor to it, I, I, and people need it for medical purposes, then I think that, that needs to be looked at.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Tripp.
Yeah, I know, I've, I've seen merchants sitting outside their stores vaping and I haven't detected any odor and I, and I'm not sure why vaping got thrown into this mix at all. With regards to actually smoking marijuana, I know that there's been some concerns from businesses because there was hanging out spots where there's benches, when there's seats downtown and it's preventing people from going to stores or walking into restaurants because they find it so offensive. And in the summertime, people are actually getting out from balconies or from the patio seating and going into the premises because of the smoke. It's intolerable for them. So for those people with, I mean, this bylaw, like any other bylaw, is going to be complaint-driven. And I think it's there because it's got teeth so that if there are complaints that are legitimate, they will be acted upon. I'm pretty sure that we don't have the bylaw people walking around to do the inspections to monitor every single thing that's going on, but it will keep teeth to a situation where you might get a crowd of people sitting outside, smoking up and creating a problem. So I, I don't have a problem with vaping. I think that should come out of there and if people with medical needs are using a vaping mechanism, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Counselor Tripp.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And, you know, if Counselor Ross is concerned about maybe we could put a caveat in saying excluding, you know, those who are using the cannabis products for, for vaping for medical purposes, it would be easy enough to add something like that in.
Les.
Not that I don't think any of you have ever partaken, but here's smoking or toking 101. I mean, if you smoke a cigarette or you smoke a joint, when you're not actually inhaling, it's still sitting there burning away. And that's the thing that most people who don't partake find objectionable, is that extra smoke. But if you smoke a single puff pipe or a vape for your, for your marijuana, what happens is you suck it in, you hold it in as much as you can and you release as little as you can because you want the full effect. When people bring in anti-vaping laws and really get upset about it, they're not really, I think, thinking about that. What they're thinking about is what they see on television for vaping. You see young people, teens, young adults, sucking in a big smoke and then blowing out a big thing. And they're imagining bars full of these kids just filling the room with smoke the way that bars used to be filled with cigarette smoke. Yeah, that's, I can see that's objectionable, but people who are vaping, especially for medicinal purposes, cannabis, they're really not putting an awful lot of extra smoke into the air. They want that in their lungs. So just so you know, you know.
All right, we're going to move on to no resolution for this one, so we're going to move right along to...
So this is coming back tonight for approval. Can we make those changes?
No, 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 no. It's not coming for approval.
Okay, okay, so we have time to make those changes, implement those changes.
So, so Your Worship, the intent of this was because of the request to bring it back for further information, it would be a suggestion that rather than put in a bylaw in midstream when we have a potential new council that's going to be... when we have a potential new council that's going to be in, that this might be something that council might wish to defer to the new council or table. And then the new council can decide if this is going to be a priority. The information's there, conversation's already been there. So just something for council to consider at that point.
The thing, what was recommended to us, though, through the workshops that I went to, is that all the legislation be in place prior to legalization. So if that's happening on October 17th, it's important to be consistent with our messaging so that as soon as everything's legal, the legislation is in place to have people smoking freely and then try and, you know, rein it back in afterwards. A couple of months later, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Currently, it is controlled through the province. So there is laws and bylaws in place.
Not with cannabis.
Yes, there is. As of our deputy's report.
May of this year, when the Cannabis Control Licensing Act was enacted and B.C. Regulation 232 of 2007.
But you can still smoke cannabis on sidewalks. That's not regulated.
You, no, the cannabis is specifically prohibited in public places where children may gather and within six meters of openings of doors, windows and ventilation.
Yeah.
So there would be potentially some sidewalk areas that would not be covered under the current provincial.
Thanks, Mayor Conrad. Well, since we've done the work here, we've been talking about it, I'd like to suggest that we continue on with Councilor Butler's suggestion there to just put in a 3.2 for cannabis and make it specific to that. It will carry all of the items that are in 3.1 for tobacco except E, which would delete the last clause of that item when used as part of an outdoor public event.
And C.
And C, because we don't need that. So delete C and delete the back half of the clause on E after city street. And that would then become 3.2, and then 3.3 would be this bylaw does not apply to, and everything else would be the same.
Except for the smoking cigarettes, you have to remove that on the city sidewalks.
Oh, okay. And where would that be?
Under 3.1.
3.1? No person may smoke cigarettes?
On public sidewalks. On public sidewalks, D would have to be removed for the tobacco.
Again, bearing in mind that this is just a proposed bylaw for discussion, which means next council or next elected officials coming in will have the same problem of discussion, and their resolution window will probably pass.
Or we could refer to tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
Tonight's meeting will be way too soon. As we are going to be finishing with the meetings of council today, there's a full-fledged elections, training, workshops. The staff is going to be completely involved with that. So there's no way that they're going to get any definitive changes to this bylaw at that point.
Just one more meeting, though, just one more regular meeting before the end of the month. Could we get it back and vote on it then?
You would only be able to go to a third reading at that point. So the approval would then be left to the new council. And we may be duplicating work if they decide to rescind the three motions at that point when they get elected and start fresh with different bylaws. So it's not common to leave the incoming council with a fourth reading sitting there for a bylaw. It wouldn't be easy to do for anybody that's coming in that isn't aware of some of the issues.
This is way too premature for us to do anything on this. Okay. Any words to say?
So we're going to move on to the only items we have left are question periods.
Yeah, it's not regarding this bylaw, it's regarding the revitalization taxes section. And I'm just wondering, when will that come back? Where are we at with that? How many meetings have we had? And how, I know we wanted to pass it in October after the assessments. I'd like to see that done this month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, we didn't, we didn't take it to any readings. It was just introduced. And because of the October 31st deadline for having that bylaw in place and reflecting on next year's taxes, it was determined, I guess, that there was no real rush to push it through. But we also needed to decide what, where council wanted to go with it, which, you know, whether to just do the downtown area or to do some rental housing or.
Well, for now, it was determined it was going to be the commercial core, and we needed to get started somewhere. And that was critical because of people that were doing renovations on their buildings now. But they wanted it to come into play after the assessments had taken place.
Your worship, I believe the conversation for council at the time was also that it would be for the following year. So we were being premature. So the thing is, is that to have a bylaw in place for the October 1st wasn't going to be effective as for the following one.
Right.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting at is that there's business owners out there and landlords that know that this is coming. They'd like to, they'd like to know it's there because they have work to do and money spent. They realize that their building is going to be assessed at the current value right now up until October 31st. That assessment will be in place. So next year, they will realize a tax reduction. But they, in that, whatever improvements they do will kick in because that's when they'll see the biggest ones, is between 2019 and 2020. But, you know, there's, people are in limbo. I know, you know, people in residences are too, but commercial builders, they'd like to know that they can get this, they can start working on this within, you know, a short period of time.
Question. So businesses downtown, they're going to have to replace their floors, period. I mean, is that an improvement? Are they going to be taxed on that? Or is that not change the actual values of the old? That's, I'm sure there's people out there wondering.
Well, the ones that don't have floors right now are being assessed at the current value of their building. So next year's taxes, come July, they're going to be taxed on the lower assessment.
Right.
Right? So whatever improvements they've put into their building, which increases their assessed value, will be taxed except for the following year when their value goes back up.
Just huge.
Which will be a big boost to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. If I recall this right, our CFO actually brought a report forward, and there was an onslaught of questions asked of council in as part of that report. Though we never got direct instructions on which way to proceed because there is a multitude of different variables that can be filled out in that bylaw. And to make it effective in this way or that way, we need some direction from council to do this. It was not a clear direction given to move forward. There's also an impact regarding on the staff time that would be consumed with a program like this, as well as how much the actual benefit would be for the end user at the end of the day in terms of tax savings on a program like this. So there was a multitude of these things brought before council, but council didn't necessarily give staff directions on how to proceed with that. The ideal scenario at this point is we can bring this back, no problem. We can bring it to maybe the October 22nd meeting to get more input from this current council, and then along with the next council, make up this bylaw. But we do need direction from council, how this tool should be used to support the business community. Internal renovations versus external, there's a multitude of things. And I know it was in that report, there was like 10 different questions that we asked from council, and we didn't get answers for.
I don't remember the questions.
Well, I certainly remember that. I do remember the memo, but maybe that need, should have, and that needs to be brought back so that it can be discussed and direction given.
So would you like us to bring it back for the 22nd meeting?
It's really important. I don't know why we haven't talked about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Ms. Rhodes won't be in attendance, though, so she is off on holiday. So we can try to get as much information down, but.
Yeah, Your Worship, we might not get as many answers because she's not here. So, you know, council can choose to bring it back on the 22nd or wait again until the new council is in place.
Was the rationale to wait till the new council? Because I thought it would have come across our desk like. I know the rationale was to wait until October, until the assessments were going through. And we knew that there wasn't a panic to get it done immediately in September or August when it was brought forward, that we could pass it in October because it would benefit the. Right, and we only have two days in October, so this would have been the meeting to talk about. Exactly.
All right. Then I'll open it up. Question period.
So my name is Gene Cook, and I sent an email to you upon the view yesterday, but it's in regard to the, again, the, what I believe the unauthorized entire logging to the Vienna Woods area. So I'd like to read the letter. So it's to yourself and the council.
I read it. I read it.
Yeah, we read it.
You read it?
We read the letter.
You read it all?
Yeah.
We read the letter.
And so what I'm looking for, I could read it perhaps for the general public as well?
No, I don't think that's necessary. In this particular case, we've read the email, and I'll have to honestly say that if there's any questions, I'm going to suspend them because it speaks to our policy in regards to elections, period, that we're in now. And I'll refer you to our C.A.O. on that, who'll give you the legislative end of it.
Just say the first part of it again.
If you're going to have any questions on this subject matter, I'm going to have to suspend any questions related to this topic because we are now in election period, and it goes against our policy. Because this has already been addressed. It's a private individual, it's private property, so we have no say on that.
What's the policy on elections, period? What, what your question?
Your Worship, the piece on the election is 11.22, where it talks about delegations and petitions that are suspended as the closing nomination. And it was almost silent. It applies to any conversations that have a potential to raise election issues and this. I think in response to the individual that has purchased the property, it is private property. And so their one requirement was is that there was determined that there was some nests on the property, and so they had to remain until September, in which the property owner at the time had every right to remove the pieces off his property, albeit it is not the entire Vienna Woods, it's the city portion of Vienna Woods. So that is the piece that, where they have every right to do that.
So, sorry, Section 11.2 of what?
Our procedures bylaw.
So unfortunately, there's not going to be much discussion on this subject matter.
All right.
All right, thank you.
It is disappointing.
Any other questions on the public?
Excuse me. Does this?
Could you identify yourself, please?
Gloria Cook. Does this statement that Gene wanted to read not apply to election time, election issues?
What do you mean, does it not apply?
Well, this is a, this is an issue that does apply to two people in the past and in the future.
But it's an issue that has to be addressed by the private individual, the only.
No, because it happened now, not in the future.
Again, regardless, I will go back to the same statement I just made. It's private property. The city has no control over the private property. What an individual does, he has met all the conditions as per. And from here on in.
Not that we could find stated in the.
Well, I'm sorry, but.
In the, your agendas and your responses and so on, and the information we could get was not.
Yeah, I'm nervous, folks. Councilor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Just a couple of issues around this. There may be an option if there was anything untoward done on the property or that went against any of the reports. Because I know there were reports that were done and provisos that were given by the environmentalist who wrote that report. So there could potentially be an option for staff, I guess, to check out to make sure that the property owner complied with those provisions that were put on the contract to purchase and sale there that had to do with that particular report, that environmental report. The other thing I'm thinking of is people in this community who are business owners, who are developing property, I believe, want to come into the community and be an integral part of it. They want to be liked and known to be investing well and taking care of the community that they have, that they have become a part of. I think it's very unfortunate that this group, you know, that the people, purchasers of this property decided to go ahead and take this step without at least, I mean, certainly, they were aware of the great concern of the people in the neighborhood over the issue of that forest being potentially cut down. And I think that they've gone ahead and done that without any notice, without any contact with any of the people in that neighborhood. To me, says, you know what? They are, they are not coming into this community and establishing a wholesome and a healthy name for themselves. And that's really, that's really sad. And I think that, I think the developers that come into this community that make promises or suggest that they have a certain agenda that is beneficial to the community, and then turn around and completely act in a different manner, that's, that's pretty shameful, I think. It's pretty shameful.
Councilor Tripp, I'm going to have to make one statement with all due respect. That's your assumption that they have contravened their contract for one?
I know, I know. The tax would just check that out.
No, but we knew it stated that developers coming into this community should be coming in with good faith, et cetera. Well, by making a statement like you did, you're actually deterring pot- potential developers coming in here by making a statement like that. Because it would be very foolish on this developer's part to try to have any kind of contraventions occur. I don't think any developer would do that because that would be very foolhardy. We can start off the ball rolling on that thing. So we're going onto an avenue I think that we don't want to go. Councilor Hammond?
I think we're almost, also talking about something that we may not know the full story about. First of all, Six Acres was not clear-cut because he only had 30 trees on his property. He did not have the entire Vienna Woods. That's owned by the school board. Secondly, he was very conscious about the trees and wanted to make sure that he kept whatever trees. We don't know that he doesn't.
They've been there?
I don't think we should be referring to the developer as he.
There isn't one tree.
They're altering our policy.
They're all cut.
Cut down between 350 and 400 trees.
Well, that's school district property.
No, it's the city property.
You're mistaken.
It's the property that was sold to him, and they're all gone.
Your Worship, I'd like to read.
We're going to, we're going to subside. Any other discussions?
Yeah, I'm still trying to find 11.2, the procedures bylaw. It speaks nothing to elections. I put a motion on the floor. It's not set in adjournment, is it?
Any votes in favor?
No.
Anyone opposed? Councilor Butler is opposed. It's meeting adjourned.